City Council.
It's crazy.
Please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance to the level of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kelly, would you do a roll call, please?
Sir, Ms. Vogt, Ms. Brock.
Here.
Ms. Reed. Mr. Coon.
Here.
Muse.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Harlan. Ms. Reed.
Here.
Thank you. Public participation. In-person participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address the council from the seat and table provided. Public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. Is there anyone tonight, John? Thank you. Remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comments to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, through web conference. Anyone here?
I believe somebody's trying to check. Does anybody have a question?
Excuse me?
I just had a quick question.
Who is this, please?
Steve Schreffler.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I understand why the police department would need guns and ammunition, but what are they gonna do with the new tire machine?
I didn't understand a word of that.
The new tire machine.
Oh, I don't know.
Mr. Reed. The police body tire machines.
Oh.
Replace tires that they have in store. Run into two, three, four days to get tires. So, there's a tire machine on the claim.
Okay. Did that answer your question, Steve?
No, I wasn't able to hear what Terry said. Came through muffled. It was something about tires that the police department has?
Yeah, it's a machine to replace tires that on the squad cars.
Oh, okay. I don't have one of those. I just didn't know what the, why the police department would have them, so. I thought that just got miscategorized and it would have been in the, uh, the maintenance shed instead, but okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report. Claims dated December 14, 2021 through January 10, 2022. Meeting minutes. City Council meeting minutes, December 13, 2021. Planning and zoning board meeting minutes, September 20, 2021. Permit report, December 2021. File reports, December 2021. Police report, December 2021. And budget report, November 2021. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, we did that.
Any comments from the, from the council? Any questions before we vote? Hearing or seeing none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor's report. There are 39 local businesses seeking to fill full and part-time positions. Visit the job board on the city's website for more information. Monticello Main Street is bringing back Chocolate Fantasy on Friday, February 11 in downtown. Tickets are expected to sell out, so purchase yours soon. Registration is open for the 12th round of the Monticello Boot Camp Small Business Development Program, beginning mid-February. Information and registration can be found online at www.monticellobootcamp.com. And I'd like to welcome Fitness Premier of Monticello opening at 1752 North Market Street, former location of the fitness center of Monticello. That's my report this evening. Let's go on to new business. Mayor proclamation. Now if I get the computer to come up, I'll read. Mayor proclamation. April 3, 2022 is Mud Puppy Day. Whereas the Sangamon River on the Illinois Natural Areas of Inventory, honored for its rich variety of aquatic resources, and whereas the mud puppy, a state threatened species, is found in the waters of the Sangamon River near Monticello, and whereas the presence of the mud puppy is a sign of a healthy river, and whereas the mud puppy is active in the winter and is unique in its aquatic lifestyle and external gills, and whereas the Land Conservation Foundation in the city of Monticello share an interest in the health of the mud puppy in the Sangamon River, and whereas the Land Conservation Foundation's annual Mud Puppy Festival invites the community to celebrate this remarkable creature in the waters where it lives. Now therefore, I Larry Stoner, mayor of Monticello, mayor of the city of Monticello, do proclaim Saturday, April 3, 2022, as Mud Puppy Day in the city of Monticello. And I urge all citizens to understand, enjoy, and protect the unique natural resources in, along the Sangamon River in Pyatt County. Is there a motion to approve my proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a vote, please?
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2022-01. An ordinance granting a variance, Michael Lawson, 846 North Front Street. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lawson wasn't able to attend tonight, so I'll go ahead and read through what the planning board and maybe gather all the information. The owner would like to construct a 2016 square foot decaf shed garage on the property. It's zone partying in that area and the maximum height of accessory building is 17 feet. And it's not to exceed 1,000 square feet. Mr. Lawson is requesting a 23-foot high roof and 2016 square feet. So in order to do this, he had the owner of the planning and zoning board and request a variance to the zoning regulations. The zoning board, a public hearing was held at December 20, 2021, and no public comment was received. The planning and zoning board recommended approval for yes, zero no's, and three were absent. At this time, it's recommended that the city council discuss and approve the variance for Mr. Lawson at the residence of 846 North Front Street.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I'm curious as to what the, why is it such a large building? Is there a reason why it's going so large? Because it's almost twice as what, you know, we would normally allow.
There's another house there with a similar type of shed on there. Either stores, cars, and that kind of thing where it needs that additional. It's heated. It's actually, it's a pretty big facility it has now. It just needs additional space.
Okay.
It's a pretty large property. It's about an acre and a half.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve? Ordinance 2022-01, an ordinance granting variance, Michael Lawson, 846 North Front Street.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing or seeing none. Can I have a roll call, please, Kelly?
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Coon? Yes.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to City of Monticello 2021 Branding Initiative. Presentation and discussion only. Am I turning this over to you, or?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
As you all remember, in 2021, we engaged with Clinton Marketing to pursue an updated and uniform branding initiative for the city. And then from these results, the Chamber and Main Street and tourism organizations will build upon. We have something like 19 different active logos between the four organizations, which is pretty ridiculous. We wanted something a little more all-in unified type. And updated and fresh and contemporary. And so there were several meetings held, several stakeholders who all were invited to participate. And we're very excited about the results. Scott Clannan and Anne Madalonas and Sarah, and I'm sorry, I can't. Clinton Marketing are here to present. There's also several representatives that participated as a stakeholder, either in person or online. And Shelley Crawford, I believe, is also remoting in in case she has anything to add or you have any questions for her. So I'll turn it over to you. But it might work. It's much more comfortable.
Give it just one second here.
You're fine.
Perfect. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. First and foremost, thank you so much for having us. As Kelly mentioned, my name is Scott Clannan. I am the owner and president of Clannan Marketing. And as you are well aware, we were hired by the city and the Chamber and Main Street to help rebrand the city, which involves new brand messaging and a new logo design, which we're presenting to you tonight. For those of you who don't know us, we are Clannan Marketing, a full-service creative agency based in Champaign. We offer a wide range of different marketing services from website design, graphic design, branding, video production, photography, and so much more. With me tonight are my colleagues Anne and Sarah, so we'll go through some introductions. Like I mentioned, my name is Scott. I'm the owner and president, and my role for this rebranding project is really art director. So I was really spearheading the overall design of the logo design that you will, you will see tonight. With me is Anne. Anne, do you want to go ahead and introduce yourself?
Yes, so my name is Anne Madalonas. I was responsible for this, in this project. I was the brand strategist. So for many of you, I conducted the focus group, the first set of focus groups. I am a resident of Monticello, have been for six years. Actually was a resident of Monticello for five years, long, long time ago, and then moved back because it's just such a wonderful place to live. And so I was really excited for us to be able to do this project. And we had some fun, and I'll be going over the research with all of you.
Sir?
I'm Sarah Cook from the graphic designer. My position was brand design, so I created the imagery and the color palette and chose the fonts and things of that nature for this project.
Wonderful. As we, when we think of a branding project, I know a lot of you think immediately probably of a logo design. But logo design is really the last stage of any well-executed brand project. That takes a lot of research to get to, to get to that phase. So I'm gonna hand it over to Anne as Anne really helps spearhead our brand research.
And not to spend a whole lot of time on it, we are gonna be able to provide you with this PowerPoint after if you want to dig into some of the research or if you have questions, you know, feel free. We left our business cards. We'd more than happy to go, go over some of the information with you. Our research really, it started with, we looked at some inspirational Midwest small towns, just to get an idea of what, what some of the other ones are doing. And some of those were such as Ashland, Nebraska, Pella, Iowa, Midora, North Dakota. We picked it. I found some that were like top small towns in Midwest travel and leisure back in 2020. But Shelley and I will be working on getting us to be in that soon, that category. And so we looked at some of that just as some inspirational. Then we looked at demographic data. And then, of course, we conducted personal interviews. We did some meetings with some folks within the community. We did focus groups and just had some conversations amongst ourselves on what we felt the research findings proved. And we feel like we developed a clear and genuine depiction of the traits and attributes to create a strong brand identity for the city. So my part was doing the demographic city data, looking at the focus group data, creating a brand story, the brand cornerstones, and the brand promise. Those are like what we consider the messaging part of an overall brand. That data is small, but really primarily, we are a younger community, under the age of 65, higher in income than the Illinois average, and higher educated, highly educated. Seventy-six percent of our residents are homeowners, enjoying a little less than average in housing costs. And 88% of our residents drive to work with a commute time of about 22 minutes. The top occupations within our Pyatt County is our healthcare, management, and education and manufacturing are the top industries of higher, of employers. And what we did, so when we dug into the focus groups, we asked several questions. And one of the first questions we asked is, what attracted you to live here? So we had three focus groups. We had a focus group consisting of just a variety of demographics within our community. Some people who have been here for generations, some people who have been here less than a year. Some of them are business owners, some of them are commuters, some of them are stay-at-home moms, some were stay-at-home dads. We had a whole variety of people to ask these questions to. So when you look at the three categories or the three columns, you have focus group one. That was our smallest group. And so throughout this, you will see that the, the answers are less, and that's only because it was a very small group at that time. Focus group two had the largest group, and focus group three was the medium group. So what attracted you? Top priority was, our top answers were school, safety, beauty, small-town environment, the amenities that this town offers residents, the resources available for businesses as well as residents. And then all, all three focus groups, you guys should be proud of this, really love the growth plan. Like we're not Mohammed, and that came up quite a bit. That we're not just growing to grow, like we are strategic in our growth plan so that we don't grow too fast, too quickly, which would interrupt resources and beauty and amenities and all the things that they really cherish, so. What makes Monticello unique compared to other towns of similar size? One thing was we're sustainable. You know, we have resources here. The hospital was a really big part of it. Churches. Being known as a destination, tourism is a big part of our community. Location, we're centrally located. We're right off an interstate that, two interstates, one going north-south, one going east-west. And then the square, we're really known for the square, and then the variety of shops and arts that we have. How do you describe Monticello to visitors? Safe, historic, friendly, great schools, caring and kind people, in the middle of everything, inviting and has everything. What are the key landmarks and attractions? Of course, the square, the train, and the train museum, Kirby Medical Center, parks, paths, Allerton Park, Polar Express, Dog Park, Eli Field. What does Monticello stand for? Togetherness, kindness. Okay, let me see. Just to reiterate, for this one, I, we did ask the question. We've been going through it, but if you could give us one word. So the one word was togetherness, kindness, supportive, opportunities, history, legacy, proud, and philanthropic. What are the benefits of living here? Location was a big benefit. This is support that is given by not only the community itself, the city of Monticello itself, but also different entities, like the financial institutions that are here to help our businesses and our, and our residents. Again, the hospital. Relationships that are formed. It's very, um, it's nice when you go somewhere and you can see a friendly face, and they like that a lot. Activities. And then, of course, we have a lot of outdoor and green space. What are the challenges of living here? Cost of housing, fine dining, employees, getting employees, small town. Some people feel like, yep, it's nice to be in a small town, but there is a little bit of that small-town mindedness that makes it a little exclusive more than inclusive with the lack of diversity. Negative people, I can tell you that that came up from some of the social media sites, which I'm sure you and your positions are very keen on what those are and who they are. And then lack of winter recreation. How does Monticello create value for residents and businesses? Free programs such we just talked about, we're gonna do boot camp again. And the city and the chamber are focused on getting things for people and businesses. The schools, managed growth again came up, leadership, meaning you all, beautification. You can tell that we care about our city and we do things that a lot of small towns our size do not do. Specialty stores, and then we have traditions that we maintain. Again, as a community, we are best at managed growth, city planning, taking pride, supporting each other, encouraging business, providing structure. Now I'm asked, we're going through these questions in the same order that we asked the questions. So these were the last two. And these were just kind of like, okay, so we're all done, but really, what do we best at? Like if you could just write it down. So these, to me, are very, very important questions. Kind of summarize what each of the group comments were throughout the session. As a community, we could improve upon more walking paths, more recreation. I think we focused a lot of that on winter recreation and senior recreation. There's a lot of recreation for youth and school and sports, but for seniors and for outdoor, we're very limited. Entrance to the city, building repairs, which Kelly loved that one. Growth, and then communication. Words to describe Monticello. So they were given a handout and all they, they just had to check. On this one, it was just all a bunch of different words, and they circled them. And so as you can see in focus group one, four people circled friendly, relaxing, charming, inviting, attractive. Three out of the four did engaging, nurturing, rural, agricultural, and inclusive. For focus group two, there were nine participants, casual, charming, friendly, relaxing, rural, agricultural. And for focus group three, friendly, fun, charming, inviting, attractive, positive, engaging, and relaxing. We asked people to compare words. Could have maybe given them what the words are. Traditional is, I can't even have it right here. Just give me one second. Choice between traditional and progressive. Focus group one picked traditional. They all three did, didn't they? If you pick destination or a pass-through, destination. Bold or reserved, we're reserved. Inviting or restrictive, we're inviting. Small town or city, small town. Familiar, fresh, we put familiar. Evolution or revolution, and evolution was chosen. Inclusive versus exclusive, it was inclusive. Entertaining versus dull. Entertaining and disciplined versus disorganized, discipline. So you can see all three groups had the same answers to those. We also said, what colors do you like? Because here the colors were identified as blue, integrity, trust, tranquility, loyalty, intelligence. Green or for white was under focus group one. White is, means cleanliness, purity, and freshness. Group two, the primary color they chose was blue again. Secondary color, it was all across, white, red, yellow, and green. Red being power, strength, passion, green. Money, growth, freshness, environmentally friendly. Which one? And white we had. Private, oh, yellow, sorry, thank you. Yellow, happiness, originality, energy. Primary color, again, blue, secondary, green. Integrity, trust, tranquility, loyalty, intelligence, and green being money, growth, environmental friendliness, and freshness. So we took all of that information and studied it. And really took a lot of time to take those words and those ideas and those comments from the focus groups to build a brand story for our community. And the brand story is a community located in the heart of central Illinois, conveniently located with easy access to the city's amenities. We strive to be known as a destination, not a pass-through. We promise to preserve our landmarks, attractions, and shops to create an inviting place to live, work, stay, and play. The leadership of the city will continue providing resources and programming to support the well-being and success of all our residents, businesses, and organizations. The people of our community will be encouraged to feel pride and ownership in maintaining the beautification of the neighborhoods and districts. Together, the people of Monticello will make every effort to ensure a sense of belonging, kindness, inclusivity, inclusivity to locals, newcomers, and visitors alike. Our cornerstones. Number one, can I see this? Hard time seeing that. Legacy, our first cornerstone we chose, legacy. Our city proudly continues to build upon the foundation created by the generations before us. Underneath that, such words that brought that legacy as a cornerstone were landmarks, the historic district, the square, State Street, traditions, and generation. Pride. We believe in maintaining the authenticity of our city with care, kindness, and restorative design. Such words that we chose under that were beautification, upkeep, restoration, kindness, inclusive, and sense of belonging. Resources. The city will continue to offer support and resources to sustain valuable services in our community. Schools and healthcare, safety, supportive programming, managed growth, progressive thinking, and sustainability. And then finally, our fourth cornerstone, location. We strive to promote the central location of our city as a destination for people and businesses to live, work, stay, and play. Attractions, destinations, shopping, special events, entertainment, and parks and recreation. And finally, our brand promise. Monticello is a centrally located community offering exceptional amenities for better living. Our tagline that you'll see how we incorporate, that's kind of how you can incorporate a lot of what we just talked about with the, the messaging portion is, we felt like close to everything, far from every day.
So taking, oh yeah, any questions?
Any questions or comments? Okay.
Excellent. So taking all that information, we then went to the drawing board to start designing a logo. And the design that we've developed, we're calling this All Roads Lead to Monticello. So this was designed to identify the city of Monticello's vibrant city center as a hub for residents and destination for visitors. We created the actual map of downtown Monticello into an eye-catching abstract representation of the community's most discernible and charming feature at the square. And so as we, and I sat into all these focus groups, and one thing is that And one thing's that kept coming back, um, is a common theme was, was the square, was the downtown district. And so we really wanted to, um, capture that within the, within the design of the logo. It's so unique to you. And I, just from working and, and, and being in other cities, I know that they are jealous of your, of your downtown district. To me, it's really the heart and soul of, of Monticello. And so some of the inspirational words that we took to help design this was attraction, inviting, destination, beautification, shopping and arts, middle of everything, and charming. So as we looked at your square, um, to, to kind of spark some design inspiration, one of the challenges that we had is that we really wanted this fresh and contemporary feel. And your square is, um, it's, it's really unique and it's historic, right? And we want, it was challenging to not go an historic route because you have some beautiful historical buildings there. Uh, but we didn't want to go in that direction. So we, we went to the drawing board and really looked at the square from an aerial perspective, but noticed that you have such a unique, um, grid, if you will. You don't have your typical kind of parallel north, south, east, west. You have this kind of slanted angle of your streets. And so to us as designers, we immediately thought that's a unique, uh, design mark that we can play with. And so we honed in on the, kind of the center of town, the heart of town, the square, and really looked at, uh, creating an icon that truly represents you as Monticello and something that cannot be replicated, um, by any other city. And this was what our inspiration was, uh, was the heart of, was the heart of Monticello, which led us to design, the next slide, um, the logo designs for the city. So again, these designs, we're calling this All Roads Lead to Monticello, a fresh and contemporary look, um, uh, for, for your logo mark. We have two different versions here, which we'll go over. Sarah will go over here in a bit, your vertical version and stack version. Again, using the, using your downtown grid as the logo mark, uh, for the city and incorporating a fresh colored palette, uh, really helps modernize and contemporize, uh, your, your overall look. Sarah, do you want to go over the design elements?
Yeah, so once we kind of started playing with ideas for the square, one of the things that I initially came up with was the color palette. You see these blues, greens, and almost yellow tones that are very commonly found in the Midwest. You see them in cornfields, you see them in bean fields, in the sky, and it's just all around us. So we got that kind of figured out and then we started trying to play with different things. And with this palette being an aerial view, it just really kind of sinks together very nicely. So we kept that kind of bright, fresh color palette. And then when I initially started with this design, it was very angular and very sharp, and it wasn't quite communicating the message that we wanted to get across. So we rounded out the corners and that kind of softened things. It made it more approachable and made it inviting and all these things that we found when we did all the studies about Monticello that it's got that kind of picture that just draws people in. We also paired it with a very modern one. We wanted this to be so usable for everyone in the city that you could read things and see clearly if it's printed or on shirts or if it's on the web. So we went with this very clean sleek font that works in a variety of applications. We also have the two different layouts for again, high usability. Some places the horizontal primary logo is great. Other times you need a little narrower, so we gave the vertical option as well.
Uh, the following here that Sarah will go over are application examples. So and we're, as we're designing a, a logo mark, we want to make sure that we use across a variety of different applications. So these are purely just examples, just as thought starters as we work to, um, brainstorm ideas on how to utilize the new logo.
So one of the things that we wanted to do is have a logo to be used by different departments across the city. So we wanted Parks and Recreation to be able to use it. We wanted the Police Department to be able to use it. So we created a sub-line that pulled a color from the logo as like an accent. So people all across the community could be able to use these. We also wanted to play with the idea of trucks. They're very utilitarian, every town needs them, but you can make it into something fun. So we oversized the logo design and put it on the back so that if you ever saw the street, you're like, oh, that's the city. I wonder what they're doing today. And with business cards, like it doesn't have to be super plain. We can do some really fun, modern takes with this kind of design. We also like the idea of flags, just having something local that celebrates the town. We included the tagline here because it's something that we personally really love. And it just kind of gets that message repeated in every places. And then t-shirts, like if you're working in an office, it'd be great to have a polo option when you go to events where you're having people come in if they want to purchase one or if you guys want to say where the people are working, then you have this option to kind of include that. On the t-shirt, we actually had the O changed to the sign, which is really nice given the simplicity of the design. You can change the shape of it and it still functions.
And at the bottom there, that's just kind of an example of like a little lapel tent, um, if you want to wear that to any type of outing or conference. So we'll end on, on this slide here, but let me actually pull up the, uh, go back to the main logos. Excellent. So again, these are the logos that we landed on based on the research that we have conducted. I think this is a strong logo that will help, um, will help brand the city now and into the future. It really helps provide a fresh, modern, and contemporary look that is truly unique, uh, to the city by using the exact kind of grid layout uh, from your downtown. So it's been an absolute pleasure working with Kelly and Shelley at the city. We want to thank them again for the, uh, opportunity. In terms of next steps, as early as next week, we are working with the, um, Chamber to start, uh, their focus groups. Start their, uh, research as we work to develop their brand messaging and then segue into their brand design, which will all provide a nice cohesive look based on what we've developed, uh, for the city.
Okay, any questions, comments? Now's your chance.
Well, I'd like to thank Clan and Group. Uh, I stay in on one of those focus groups. Uh, and I don't know if it was the largest group or not, but there seemed to be.
You were in the second one, yeah.
Folks, and a whole gamut of demographics and men and women, and each of them came to the table with a little bit different, um, ideas and expertise and experience. You guys did a great job making that an interactive, um, session and, you know, getting people to talk and share in a room full of strangers. So, uh, I commend you on, on the focus group that I attended and appreciated, um, that focus group and your work on, on this. It's a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
I thought it was great. Focus groups all managed to say the kinds of things that you really wanted to be said about how, how we're doing and a good job in nurturing the community. And I think that really kind of why you were able to bring that up is it was very hard to breathe. But that was, uh, awesome.
But at the same time, they still did have some concerns and they felt very comfortable expressing those two, which is always good because if everybody sat there and said, we love everything, then you're not gonna.
Right.
We would've had a hard up there.
And they did share some concerns and we introduced ourselves. So here there were a bunch of strangers and then the city administrator sitting next to you.
Yeah.
You know, what's your complaint about the city? And, and they shared the concerns, but yeah.
I thought so too.
Anything else?
I was just going to say, I think it's interesting how you took all of the information from the different groups and then came up with this design. I, I love the, the story behind it.
I was just gonna add that, you know, this is, the more we look at it, the more it grows on Shelley and I. But one of our concerns was, um, you know, we had compared a lot to Mohammeds. We'll just throw that out there. And one of our concerns was it'd be something that could very easily be replicable. How many communities that start with M have an M for a logo? How many communities are there school colors? Um, and that's not to say we're, we're opposed to that. You will notice there's a purple and a, a gold hue in there for a reason. Um, but we are Monticello, we're not the school, we're not Mohammed. We have our own square, like, like Scott said, it's just slanted slightly. This is something very unique to us and, um, we truly can call that our own because it's based off of a geographical position that we have in our community, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a knock to the past without feeling too sore. It feels fresh and contemporary.
I think it's interesting, I mean, it reflects kind of my feeling and as somebody kind of in the middle of, um, not just, not the young, not the old, but, um, they're keeping the legacy. You think people like the fact that we're, you know, that's what makes us different than a Mohammed, for instance, who doesn't, they don't have a history. And we've managed to preserve the history. But I think there's a feeling of we need to continue to, to grow and grow the right way. And this is a sophisticated look that kind of tells that story sort of subliminally without, you know, in, making it in your face. And so I think it will make us seem a little more modern without losing that history that we all care deeply about.
Absolutely.
Making progress with the integrity of.
Right.
The town's history.
My only thought is if you go back to where we're using the logos to, and put the, the wording underneath it, is I don't think if, you know, where it says City of Monticello Police or whatever, whatever color, I don't know that you can read that, that well. So I don't know if there is a, a different color or whatever.
You can choose from with those logos, which is one of the priorities of it. But two, this.
The light blue or whatever, it just is, is tough to read. And I think you want to have something that, I like the fact that you can add whatever. City of Monticello, Black Department, man. Do, but I, if I, as I looked at those, it was, I had to, to really look closely to be able to read it. And maybe that's just because it's, it was too, too light, whatever, but.
Anything else, anyone else? Certainly appreciate your efforts, Clan and Group, that's.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate your business, don't we?
Yes.
It was fun.
Yeah, this was a great.
Yeah.
And we're not done yet.
No, moving on, yeah. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
And thank what you do for the community, we appreciate it. Or I do, living here. Thank you.
Can we turn it off?
Or it's fine.
Okay, City of Monticello Ward Map Adjustments Discussion Only. Carrie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I handed out everybody in attendance tonight, a 14-page document memorandum from, uh, Dan Bowlin from, it's a plane. Last week I asked Dan, uh, to get us, uh, kind of a, the clip note version of how to best proceed forward in, in the redistricting, redistricting. Um, and Dan gave me this, um, I actually received that this morning. So I still would like some time to review that document. But I wanted you guys to have it, um, tonight and then you can take it home, read it, and digest it. Uh, I plan on having a phone conversation with Attorney Bowlin, um, within the next few days. Um, but one of the things I did want to point out tonight, uh, should be, this Ward Map should be approved, uh, before August 30th of this year for, um, the, the candidates, uh, in the consolidated primary on February next year, 2028. So, um, I think it's, uh, the intent here is to, uh, digest this and then we'll try to, uh, have a discussion, possibly more in-depth discussion at the next city council meeting. And, um, we need to take, maybe at that meeting, we, we have an action item, we actually adopt a map, um, if, if we're to that point then at the next meeting. But I wanted to give you guys this, this memorandum to, to read and digest. And if you have any questions, uh, shoot me an email, um, and I will answer it or get the answer for you from the attorney.
Okay.
That's, that's all I have.
Any questions before we proceed? I got this, this morning, I ran it off this morning when I got it. And I just, I tried to sit down and read it and it was a lot to read and I didn't get through it. So we, we didn't, we're gonna talk, but we didn't even have time to talk. It was, it's just a lot to digest. But I think we can handle it. Okay. All different persons' reports. Let's start with Mary, she dressed in black tonight.
Um, I just want to acknowledge not, not just our local law enforcement, but all first responders. I know yesterday was Law Enforcement Appreciation Day and just, um, had a, had a tricky drive coming back from West Lafayette on, on Saturday and the number of police and firefighters and people just out assisting. I thought, man, I, I just don't know where we would be without people willing to, to jump out there first. So thank you for keeping Monticello safe and serving its surrounding communities as well.
I don't.
Uh, not a lot, I guess. Thanks to the Street Department guys for getting out and getting Christmas decorations down and less than good weather. It was bitter cold a couple of those days, but they, it looks like they got everything cleaned up. I would, uh, Sam's not here tonight, but, uh, I've driven around to some other small towns. I would really like to see us, uh, find some money somewhere to purchase some updated, uh, things for the poles, the light poles along 105 and the large areas. I think our stuff around the square looks fine, but, uh, the wreaths are getting pretty shabby and there, there are a lot of great decorations in some of the other small towns around that, uh, not as many as we have up, but the ones that are up really looked pretty slick. But thanks to the guys for getting them down and taking care of them. Um, I was a little bit surprised the other night. Mary spoke to her trip home and, and, uh, many of us were out Saturday. I was somewhat shocked because I didn't consider that to be an ice event. We didn't have power outages, we didn't have trees down, we didn't have anybody causing problems. We, City of Monticello shut down, closed down. Only thing that was open was a grocery store, McDonald's and Hardee's. Not a place to eat, nothing else. Every business closed up, square closed up tight, not a light on, nothing. Granted, roads were a little slick, sidewalks were a little slick. But folks, you know, that wasn't an ice event. That was a tenth of an inch of skim ice. This wintertime in Illinois, I, I thought we should've done better. I thought the businesses should've tried harder. Put a little salt out in front of your business, take a little time, invite people in. Instead, they locked the doors and said, we're done till Monday. We'll, we'll see you Monday. I didn't think that was a great response. So that's just my opinion. I'm sorry, I, I was out in it. I was in champagne and drove back to Monticello and got along fine. Yes, there was ice, but I was really surprised. When I got back to town and the place is dark. I mean, it, you just thought we had a, some kind of major weather event and we did not. It'll get a lot worse than that. So I hope that the businesses jump on board and, and try and invite people to, you know, take your time, be safe. I don't want you to be out there if you're not safe, but, you know, do a little better. Clean your sidewalks off, invite people to come in and eat, sit inside, enjoy, relax. Instead of just locking the doors and say, we'll see you when thoughts out, you know? So that's all, I'm done.
Michael?
Thank you. I want to thank the city for doing, and I don't know if it was in the last couple of weeks, but, um, we've had, we've had wind, unusually strong winds and they've done a great job going around and, and getting the limbs. And I was a beneficiary of getting some limbs down in our yard and the city came and took care of that. So I appreciate, I continue to appreciate all they do to, to, uh, pick up and, and help people move on from those things.
Thank you. Thomas? Nothing, Mr. Mayor?
Nothing.
Nothing tonight.
Nope. Ashley?
Nothing needed. I, I do have a question, a clarification question. It, is our tree, Christmas tree pickup, it's every Tuesday in Jan, January? Is that correct, just running through January? Okay.
It's gonna get yours out now, is it?
It's finally out, yes. Fire hazard.
They just went through our neighborhood yesterday. I saw the truck, that's the only reason. They'll get you. Don't get you. John Carter, Police Chief.
Saturday, let's say it was brought up, we had seven ice-related crashes between 11:00 AM and 7:00 PM. So there were some people out there that weren't quite safe. Some of the, some of the things that were hit were stop signs, hydrants, other cars, stuff like that. So it was slick. Total of last year's calls, this is minus one week as we started spilling a week late last year. Our total calls for the year was 2,832. This week, we will be co-hosting a fire in County Hennepin. That's for Wednesday and Thursday. And tomorrow, I'm going to be meeting with the Police Fire Commission, they'll get our hiring process for a new officer for one that has left and gone to different locations.
Okay, thanks, John. Keith Robkey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last month, we ran 30 calls, which put us at 403 calls for the year, not quite as busy as Jack does it. But, and we had some training, kept up our training last month, and we did seen ties up in radio communication. For volunteers, being on the radio is kind of, is kind of scary, you know? We tried to do as much training beyond the radio, because communication is the most important thing we could have, especially on the fire grounds and coming to a fire ground. So we tried to practice that a lot. We also did a live high burn and smoke training in our trailer out by the golf course there. So also getting in there and getting some of our new firefighters in, so smoke and heat really, really helps them out, helps us all out. And we got our Christmas, Fire Department Christmas Dinner on December 11th, so we had some fun. And for 2021, we did a total of 1,374 hours of training, which is approximately 76 hours per firefighter for the year. So we try to keep our guys and gals all trained up and ready to go, so when the call comes, we're ready to do it. Thank everybody for your support last year. We should appreciate it.
Thanks, John. Any comments or questions to the chiefs? Thank you both for all you do. I think it's Terry's turn. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real brief, Happy New Year to everybody. Pleased to announce the large dump truck we ordered in January of 2021 is sitting and coning, is getting the bed fabricated for. That was delivered a couple of weeks ago. About a year later, we got the big dump truck. Next council meeting, we'll be doing surplus equipment, ordnance to purchase and trade in. For some of those items we talked about, the bucket truck, one-ton mowers, and so forth, obviously there's a delay in getting that equipment, so Public Works Director Baker wants to get on that as soon as possible, so we'll be at next council meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Anyone have, think of anything in the meantime? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
They'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Adjourn. Bill's a 24.